When are we giving another, another minute? And then I'll go ahead and start.
Okay.
Let me see if. There he is. Judy, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry about that.
No worries. Sean, we're ready to go?
Uh, yes, we are. Recording has started.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, welcome Wednesday, March 16th, Design Review Commission meeting. Uh, we'll go ahead and start by establishing a quorum. If you could just say aye when I call your name out, that would be great. Commissioner Kirik?
Aye.
Commissioner Ma?
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop?
Aye.
Commissioner Harding? I think he's still out of town and Commissioner Blockus, aye. So we have four commissioners here. That is a quorum. Uh, Sean, are there any, uh, people here who want to make public comments that aren't on the agenda?
I have not, uh, received any notice of anyone who would like to discuss an item on, uh, not on the agenda, uh, unless there is a member of the public who would like to speak. Um, please raise your hand or please unmute yourself and state your name. Um, and I should actually reference that stating your name or residence is not requirement, it's optional. Um, no one has, uh, referenced that they would like to provide a public comment not on the agenda. Here's we have none.
We'll go ahead and move forward to the consent calendar. Uh, item one, uh, the Design Review Commission meeting minutes from February 16th. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
Um, uh, Chair Blockus, I, I had a comment on one of the agenda items that I kind of pull it up now. It's regarding a comment on one of the projects about, um, the door design, and I think it was specifically going to be the garage door design was the comment, so, um, I can send Sean or, uh, yourself.
And that was based on the February 16th meeting?
Yeah, it was an item that we continued with direction and I believe, um, it was regarding the garage doors.
Okay. So you go ahead and forward that to Sean?
Yeah, I'll forward that to Sean.
Thank you very much.
Do we have, do we then have a motion for, uh, the meeting of February 16th?
I move. I move to approve, um, the minutes from February 16th.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, moved and seconded. Uh, take a quick vote. Commissioner Ma?
Aye.
Commissioner Kirk?
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop?
Aye.
Then Commissioner Blockus, aye as well, and again, Sam Harding is not here, so he's abstaining. Uh, do we have any comment on item two, the Design Review Commission meetings from March 2nd? I, I have one. Uh, just at the adjournment, it has Chair Blockus adjourned the meeting. I had already left the meeting at that point. It was Vice Chair Ma who did, who adjourned the meeting.
Uh, noted?
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
I move, I move that we approve the meeting.
Second? Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All those, uh, we'll go through again. Commissioner Kirk?
Aye.
Commissioner Ma?
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop?
Aye.
And Commissioner Blockus is an aye as well, and again, Commissioner Harding is not present. Go ahead and move to, uh, our discussion. Item three, uh, however, SC 21 dash 0027 for the property at 2256 Deodora Drive has been continued to the April 6th meeting. Uh, so we will not have any discussion or, uh, information on that one. And we go to item four, which is our, uh, main property here today. That's SC 21 dash 0039, uh, the property located at 217 Paso Robles Avenue. Um, staff, do we have a, uh, presentation?
Hey, David?
Yeah.
This Frank here. Is this the point where you're supposed to do that ex parte piece again?
Uh, yeah, you are correct. So, uh, any other commissioners have any ex parte, uh, communications with anyone regarding this, this particular application? Sounds like I don't have any. Okay, so we'll go ahead and go to, uh, staff report.
Sorry. Good evening. Um, I'll be presenting the, um, designer review application. But real quick, um, Sean, if I, the applicant is not here and after speaking with him earlier indicated he was, I'm not sure what the issue is, but would we normally just continue?
So it's the discretion of the commission if they would like to continue. Traditionally, an applicant is present, but the commission could, uh, review the item and rule on the item even if they're not present. Though if you make particular conditions, they may not be present to be able to respond or provide their own presentation tonight. So it's really to the discretion of the commission.
Okay. Yes, I, um, so I spoke with the applicant this afternoon who, um, did indicate he intended on attending. But, um, doesn't seem to be in here. I sent him an email and haven't heard back. I don't think he's one of the phone numbers. That I listed here.
Let me see if there's a phone number. I may call them to see. Maybe they're having a technical issue. Sometimes happens.
Okay, why don't we take a minute or two, Sean, if you can go ahead and do that?
Chair, the, um, Mr. Lee is going to join the meeting. He just couldn't locate the link. So I sent, I just emailed him the link, so he should be joining in a moment.
Great. Do we need, uh, him to be here, uh, for staff's presentation?
Uh, no, no, he, his presentation will be directly after, uh, Nas' presentation.
Okay, why don't I give him about a minute?
Okay, Sam, so I'll see you there. Thank you. Uh, Chair, did you wish to wait or did you wish for Nas to do?
Yeah, I was gonna give him a minute to, to get on. I prefer the applicant to be able to listen to staff in case there's any.
Mr. Lee is on now. Well, he's, he's joined us.
Okay, go ahead, staff. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so I will be presenting item four, a designer review application for 217 Paso Robles Avenue where a new approximately 3,400 square foot two-story home is proposed. The subject property is located on an interior lot on Paso Robles Avenue between Mercedes Avenue and Carmel Avenue. So here we have an image of the proposed home as well as the existing home. And then some of the, uh, surrounding homes on the street. Uh, which you can see there's a variety of architectural styles and scales and a mix of one and two-story homes. And I'll just move this real quick so you can see this home. So here we have the proposed site plan and zoning compliance table. And we have the street located over here, front yard. The new two-story home is located here. Um, the second floor is the stashed line. And then in the rear is a detached ADU. Um, but the, uh, the process for that would be ministerial and it's, uh, not part of the, uh, design review application. Uh, so the proposed setbacks meet or exceed the minimum requirements. This is considered a narrow lot, so the side setback requirements are somewhat reduced. So this slide includes the front elevation of the proposed home, um, which includes elements, um, some different styles, but traditional materials. Um, except for, um, there is metal roofing proposed on the, uh, as accents on the front facade. Um, the report discussed, um, some concerns about the prominence of the second floor um, and the steep roof pitch above the front entry, um, which may emphasize the height, which is just under the max of 27 feet. Um, so the DRC may want to discuss, um, whether, um, these features can be found consistent with the design guidelines. Um, in addition, the DRC may want to discuss the, uh, four different roof pitches and types, uh, where the design guidelines discourage complex roof forms, uh, for better compatibility with the older homes in the neighborhood. So that said, looking at the other facades, uh, the first floor plate heights are, uh, 9.6 feet and the second floor plate heights are 7.3 feet. Um, so that as well as setting the second floor back from the first floor, uh, for the most part, um, especially on the sides and, uh, part of the rear. Um, I'll lift this over a little bit. Um, so that does help minimize the appearance of bulk, uh, from the other sides of the home. Um, regarding privacy, um, to minimize any potential impacts, the side-facing windows have four and a half to five-foot sill heights. And the larger egress windows either face the street or the rear yard. And to obscure views from the rear yard second-story windows, um, evergreen trees are being proposed along the side property lines as well as the, uh, rear property line in this area. Um, this is an existing redwood tree that would remain. Um, and, uh, there are several, um, small trees throughout the site, um, as well as a protected pine tree that's approximately in this area here, um, that are, um, proposed for removal, generally due to, um, poor conditions. Um, but they would be replaced with new landscaping. So, within the plans, there are two different grading and drainage plans. Um, option A would raise the grade along the rear part of the property about a foot. And option B would conform to the existing grades along the property line. Um, so option A was, uh, what was initially proposed by the applicant. Um, option B is recommended by staff, um, for consistency with the required findings, which speak to minimizing grade changes. So with that, staff recommends that the Designer Review Commission approve the Designer Review Application subject to the findings and conditions contained in the agenda report. Um, and thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? No. Frank?
No questions.
Okay. Michael, I assume no?
Um, just a quick question for the staff. Uh, is there any, uh, any, you know, if any coming, maybe this is a question for the applicant. Is there any, um, correspondence or communication, uh, from the neighbors?
Um, there was, um, one of the attachments included the outreach. Um, and then part of that outreach included communication with, um, one of the neighbors where, um, there were some trees proposed for removal that are overhanging, um, into their property. And that was also included as an attachment. Um, besides that, after the, um, the meeting notice was posted, um, I have not received any, um, communications from neighbors.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I had.
Great, thank you. Uh, why don't we go ahead and, uh, have the applicant, uh, Mr. Lee, if you'd like to speak?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, uh, I'm Sam Lee. I'm the architect and the owner of, uh, 217 Paso Robles. First of all, I wanted to thank everyone, um, and especially staff for helping, uh, me through this and my wife. Uh, it's, I'm not sure if they weren't had a chance or know the street, street really well. It's a pretty quaint street and it's very eclectic with a lot of small lots and some overgrown trees. But mostly what's striking about the street is that there's a lot of kind of an older cottage character, steep pitched roofs. Um, seems to be the predominant character. There've been some redevelopment, but we wanted to sort of retain that character, hence the steep pitched, uh, gable, uh, the prominent gable in the front. Um, and it, we think that it'll add and keep the charm of that neighborhood. Uh, it's, but back to that, uh, point, let me see if I could share my, um, screen here. Sorry, I'm not as familiar with this. Let's see here. Why not? Let's see here. Can everyone see that screen? There we go. Just, uh, just, I just wanted to focus on this rendering. Uh, this gable, I, I thought it was really important that the gable, the plate drops down almost to the first level. And although the, there is a, a bit of a cantilever towards the front, I, we, I think that it is still four feet back from the front yard setback and the front porch, uh, roof, you know, hides that. Uh, so that, you know, I, I would gladly take some opinions on that if you want or more questions. As that was a potential topic of discussion. The other question was the grading. We, I did submit two grading options, one that allows up to one foot, which would be potentially retained by a kicker board on a fence. And that's to potentially allow for future, you know, flooding or failure of, uh, should the, the lot ever flood or, uh, we ever retain water. Um, it, the, the lot does slope a little bit currently from front to back and, and which is not ideal. Um, you know, you never want to keep your, you, you want to try to retain your water and put it out to the, the public street. So since we are demolishing the home and regrading the site, there is a chance to do that without it, you know, adding any true CMU or block retaining walls. That, that's why there was, were two options chosen. I do want to point out, and in those two options, the finished floors are the same. Uh, and so they both meet, you know, all height and setback requirements of daylight planes. Um, I think that that's about it. I, I would be happy to answer any other questions. I appreciate the time that you guys put into uh, make sure that we, uh, build nice homes.
Great, thank you. Um, Commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Lee?
I had a quick question on the, um, drainage, since it's topic here. Uh, are you damming in any way, uh, the natural flow of water across the site?
Um, so I'm not necessarily damming it, but currently it does slope front to back. So it is already, it sort of is damned right now. Um, we have a chance to fix that, fix most of it at least. Let me, um, let me try to see if I can, you, you, would you mind if I share a screen again? Let me see if I can bring it up.
Go ahead.
Okay, let's see here. I don't know how well you can see these numbers here. So this is Paso Robles, uh, the street and the right of way. Um, as you can see, it slopes 99.9 on the left corner and 99.4 on the right corner. So it's relatively flat, but a gentle left to right slope. Um, and then currently in the back, the existing grade is 98.89, so it's almost a foot down. And so just by putting, I'm, I'm trying to put most, uh, the, uh, the lowest point above, let's say, you know, 99.7 or six, so that should any water pool or whatnot, um, it will, it, meaning if this catch basin fails, that it will have a overlay and release point, which is important for civil engineers and, and um, is that gonna happen? You know, uh, potentially not, but we never really know. I mean, we've had droughts and things, but, um, it, which is, I, in, in my past, um, experience, it's been fairly normal to raise it up to a foot. It's not, you know, catastrophic. I think, I see people doing it all the time with kicker boards on their fences. So that's why we're, we were proposing that initially. So this is design A. Um, and I believe, can you guys? Hold on a second. It's taking a little bit of time here. And this is design B where we keep it down a foot, 98.9. Um, 98.5. So I don't, I, I hope that clarifies it a little bit.
Uh, well, I a little bit, uh, I guess when you push water from back to front and you take it to the street and it flows across into your neighbor's front edge, it's gonna, if the general topography is the same as your lot, then that water would then flow back across their property towards the low point, right? So you're, you're concentrating your natural water flow to the front edge, which then drains back across their properties. Does that make sense?
It, it, no, that makes a lot of sense and that's should not be how it's designed, that, that they should have a dam. People should not be collecting street water into their property.
Yeah.
And so there should be a, uh, I think you call it a dam or a, a reverse well to prevent that.
I just, the reason why this is actually important, because there are a lot of areas and, and I'm, I'm not sure how this area works, because I haven't driven through there, but there are a lot of low-lying areas where street ponding is an issue. And, you know, I wouldn't want to create a design or approve a design. And we're not here to approve grading and drainage plan. That's kind of public works and whatnot. But, you know, I don't want to increase the potential for a problem on the street frontage. But if you're assuring me that that's not the case here, then, you know, that's, that's different, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're retaining our water. That's why we added drains. And so if there's a failure, instead of flooding out to the neighbors on the sides and the back, it will go to the street. And ideally, if designed properly, everyone else's property, they should not be taking in water from the street. That, that would be it. Uh, potentially really bad, uh, but I can't speak on, I can't speak on behalf of the conditions of, of the neighbors' properties.
And the, and the only differences in the design is, looks like you're building a slab on grade for the ADU versus a crawl space. Is that the difference?
Uh, no, I, I think I would be, it, it, I mean, I, I envisioned this finished floor being the same for that reason, in case it does flood. And I do retain water for a while until it fails and seeps onto the neighbors or whatnot, until it has a release point, that it's above, that the finished floor is above the release points that it needs to be.
I'm just looking at your pad. Um, there's a difference in your pad. Finished floor is the same, but the pad is a foot and a half different.
Here.
100 versus 98.5.
Let me, let me, yes, that, that would, yes, that would be the case. You could do a slab with the other one. This would be a crawl space, correct?
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, no, I, I.
Is that all your questions, Jude?
Yes.
Michael, any questions?
Yes, I have several questions, uh, for the applicant. Um, first, um, so where should I start? Um, have you communicated with your neighbor? Because I noticed that, uh, your neighbor has a swimming pool. And then, um, of course you have a landscape plan proposing some tree, but, uh, I am not able to find the, the size of the proposed tree along the back, those three new trees. So, and that's why I asked the staff if they receive any concern from the rear neighbors. So that's why I want to hear from you on that one. So that's question number one. Um, the other one is that, um, I noticed on A 3.01, um, you're on the left side of the south elevation, front elevation on the left side, um, where you dimensioned the patio door seven foot. But there's another dimension that looks like only six inches from the new grade. But on the other part of the, the elevation or on the, on the elevation mark, you're actually, your finished voice uh, almost a foot, almost a little more than a foot high. So I, I just wondered, is that a mistake or is that intentional that some part of the floor is lower than the other one on the, on the ground floor?
Uh, so that's, yeah, sorry, good, good, big up.
So, and then, uh, and then the, the last question is pretty minor. Um, I noticed that the, um, your eve is shown on the elevation and the, um, the rendering. You have exposed raptor tail. Is that intentional? Is that intentional, or you, are you gonna have gutter, I'm just curious on that one? That's what I have, you know, you can take your time to answer.
Okay, so, let me see, I'm gonna go, so the first question was regarding, regarding neighborhood outreach?
Yeah, landscaping, screening and the neighbors' privacy.
So, yes, I, there was, just to be clear, I, there was extensive outreach, I actually did go and meet with the neighbor on the right, the Hendricks. I actually even walked their backyard, I was invited to their backyard to look at the conditions. One of the main reasons was because I believe there's a requirement for planning. There are some trees that overhang onto their property, so they wanted to make sure that it was okay. I spoke to them, they emailed them, they responded in email. And then we looked at, there were their windows were, my windows will be with the plans. And I believe Sharon, Miss, Miss Hendricks, she, we agreed that, you know, the ones that were, she actually was gonna be quite happy with the uniform screening versus the eclectic amount of some of the shrubs and toions that are and oleanders that have kind of grown up, and they're sort of not consistent. And so, so that was done, and it is reflective on the landscape plan, I believe we're calling out Prunus carolinas, I believe, which is an evergreen.
Are you talking about the neighbor to the right?
Yes, to the right.
What, what, to the rear, to the rear?
Oh, to, well, to, okay, so to the rear, I have not met with the neighbor to the rear, I had contacted, I, I believe the house was for sale at the time, and I talked to the real estate agent, and asked the agent to contact the owner and such. And there are screen trees that are, the same trees are planted back there as well.
And what's the size of the tree being proposed on the landscape plan?
Uh, gosh, good question. Should be fifteen gallons. Uh, sorry, yeah. Brisbane box or Grecian laurel, you know, the, I don't, let's see. They, they actually, you mean the size of the actual tree that's gonna be, that it's?
Yeah, the planting, the, the initial planting size for the.
You know, that's not called out?
I don't see any, you propose either a new evergreen tree, breeze bin box.
Brisbane box or Grecian laurel.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't see, I don't find any initial planting size.
I mean, we can put in a twenty four inch box there, it's.
Uh, that's fine, we, we can discuss the, the commissioner, and we, we can ask if we have more question. What about the, the, the other two question?
Uh, the finished floor step, I believe you were talking about the left elevation?
Yeah, no, the front, the, the left side of the front elevation on, on three point zero one. On the left side of the front elevation.
Yeah, I, I was intending, I am intending on that guest bedroom to have a step down. To be a little bit lower.
Okay, okay, that, that clarify, okay, I clarify, so, okay.
And, and I think the last question's about the raptor tails, I, I, I do want to propose exposed raptor tails with a square cut, probably a three by raptor tail, so it's nice and beefy. And that, there will be gutters on top of it, yeah, I'm sure.
All right, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bishop, any questions?
Not at this time.
And nor do I. So let's go ahead and close. And Sean, do we have any public comment on this project?
Uh, no, if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, if you could please raise your hand. And/or if you do not raise your hand, you may also unmute yourself and provide your name, which is optional, if you'd like to speak on the item. We have only, I believe, uh, one second. Lola, um, did you wish to speak on this item, or are you just observing? Or five one two nine seven two one seven five, did you wish to speak on this item?
Uh, yes, hello, I'm the neighbor to the left, two two five Paso Robles, my name's Kimberly. So nice to see some of the changes that we, Sam and I discussed, which is very nice. There was the grading that you're talking about doing in the far back left corner. That goes up against, I have a garage and cottage there, just want to make sure none of that flooding or any water damage could come through on the pipes that do go to the cottage, we talked about the greenery moving, and it looks like that was done, Sam. Where trees are not against that fence line anymore. Okay. On that, I think it's good as long as we make sure, you know, no issues on the back flooding.
Anyone else, Sean?
No, I do not have any other speakers. If there are any speakers, please unmute yourself, otherwise you will no longer have an opportunity, thank you. Uh, Chris, Chair Blockus, it appears we have no other speakers, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and open up for Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Bishop, would you like to begin?
Uh, sure, I'm gonna be brief on this, I, I know the neighborhood down there pretty well. I think it's a very nicely designed house, actually, to fit into the neighborhood, so I would be in, in favor of the, the project.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Ma?
Um, I, I think generally the over, overall design is, is nice, I mean, the, the use of the, the, the the roof as part of, I mean, or low roof as part of the second floor to plan in, so the impact is not that big. I, I do have a little concern about that privacy in the back. Just because the, the rear neighbor just happened to be on the market or in the, in the process of a change of ownership. Because the, the proposed tree is re, screening tree along the back is small. And then there are some window facing, but I don't know, in this case, the neighbor, I mean, you change on a show that result that, that is a result that there's no one in the, as from the rear neighbor to express the concern or any concern. So that's one, and the second one is the, the result of raising the grade. And then with the ground floor height, a little bit higher than what we used to approve, we are nine foot six, because the applicant is raising the grade almost a foot. Uh, I mean, they say nine inch or foot, and then propose a nine point six or nine point seven foot, and then consider the neighborhood on the left inside one, so, I mean, just a little concept, but overall, I, I, I'm, you know, supporting the design, I think the, the design you know, they could compensate the, the, all this, you know, minor, you know, issue, so overall, I, I'm in support of project, and, but we'll see, we can come up with I want to hear some of you, you know, see if you guys have those concern about the privacy and the height. Otherwise, I, I'm in general in favor of the project. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Kerrick?
Uh, similar comments, you know, one, very familiar with the neighborhood, we looked at another project close by last meeting, it's quite, I would call it an eclectic neighborhood, and I agree with the architect that the roof forms are very consistent with what we typically see in that neighborhood, so it it, in terms of character, in terms of design guidelines, I think it fits right in. Architecturally, it's done very well, nice layouts, nice roof forms. Would have been nice to see some of that carry through on the backside, but, you know, the front and the back house look completely different, but you know, I understand why it is. Uh, you know, I'm puzzled on this grade thing here, especially with the neighbor to the left, because you know, the option A, the preferred option, you know, we're, the architect's showing an eighteen inch high headerboard in back. So depending on what existing grade you look at, it's either, you know, it's a minimum of a foot higher, if not more than a foot four. So my concern is, one, that water that would naturally flow across the back of the site is now being dammed, and, you know, if I'm the neighbor with their unit in back in their garage, water that's flowing in that area that would naturally she flow over into the neighbor's property is now being, you know, damned and being forced to the back corner of their lot, so there might be some impact on the garage and the, the guest unit on the neighbor in the back. And then getting back to my comment about, I understand, you know, draining, you know, front to back or back to front, but, you know, this is a case where if there is overflow, there is a swell that takes water back out to the street, and so water that wouldn't be at the street now is at the street. So, you know, I, I can ponder this, and once again, I don't think it's you know, technically us to review, but I agree with Nas that this isn't consistent with kind of how we've looked at other projects, so I would agree with the staff and look at the, you know, the original grade as the correct solution there, given the design guidelines and to alleviate any potential issues for the neighbor on the left.
Great, thank you. I as well support the project, as staff has written it up with option B for the grading. The privacy impact, I don't think there, I think you're fifty plus feet from the or forty eight plus to the back. And looking over that fence, you're kind of, the, the lot kind of behind goes off to the it's kind of a little bit odd shape, I don't think you're looking right into the main area of entertainment or whatnot there. So I, I would support the project as well. Do we have any further comments or a motion? Why sure, Dave, we have a motion.
I'll, I'll make one.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me get this right, I'm trying to technology challenge today, I, I I move that we approve SC twenty one yes zero zero three nine. The home, new home at twenty one seven Paso Robles Avenue for the findings and conditions in the staff reports.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Bishop. Let's go ahead and vote on that, so Commissioner Kerrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ma?
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop?
Aye.
Commissioner Blockus, I am as well, so the motion passes four to zero with Commissioner Harding obviously absent, so congratulations, your project has been approved.
Thank you very much.
You're so welcome. Do we have any commission reports or comments? The only thing I have is, again, I will be, it looks like we're not, well, on April sixth, I will be out of town. So Michael will be taking over my duties as vice chair. And it looks like also April twentieth, if I am correct, Sean, has been canceled?
Uh, yes, it is canceled, correct, it's a conflict with a religious holiday.
Okay. Any potential agenda items, Sean, that we need to be aware of?
No, I do have an update on SV nine on our submitted requirements, if you'd like to hear about it. Uh, so council had a closed session on Tuesday regarding a previous item, it was supposed to go to the council on March eighth. That was regarding the HRI and the DPR requirements in relation to SB eight and SB nine and their application to ADUs and single family home or designer view applications. The council has currently, the planning division has currently eliminated the requirement for the DPR forms to be submitted with SV nine applications. DPR forms are still to be submitted with SV three thirty projects, which are multifamily projects that we have with the city. This is at an interim measure while the city pursues input from HCD with the state. And then there will be a follow up decision after we see, receive that information to determine whether we are permitted to require DPR forms with SBA, SB nine and SB three thirty. As you're aware, the determination previously was that DPR forms, DPR forms are department park and recreation forms that are required for for determining whether a property is historic or a historic resource, with, they were determining it was required for SB eight, SB nine and SB three thirty. SB nine, as you're all aware, is, is the state regulation and local ordinance that does permit subdivision of property into two lots and does allow for administrative or ministerial approval of, of new houses up to two per lot. And SB eight was being considered to be broadly applicable to all designer view applications. At the, at the March eighth meeting, there was a proposal for SB eight to be applicable and the DPR requirement to be applicable to all designer view applications. One story additions, two stories. Council has pulled back from that, and we will wait to see what HCD advises the city, and we'll have more to report back to you.
Okay. Alrighty, anything else?
Nope, that is it.
All right, well, it's early evening, then, I'll go ahead and adjourn, it's seven forty eight, and we are adjourned.
All right.
Everyone?